Comedian, County Planning Commission. I'd like to have you all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
With a clear call to roll, please.
Here, and I apologize for being late.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Oster?
Here.
For the record, we have Commissioner White that is not here today, and Commissioner Kestley was under the weather, and she wasn't sure she was going to be here, so we'll assume she won't be here today. Item four, public comments. This is the time for the commission to receive public comments on any items that are not on the agenda. I have no cards. Are there any speakers out there? Okay. Moving to item five, approval of the February 8th, 2018 minutes.
I move adoption of the minute.
Second.
Have a motion and a second vote. Okay. All right. Item six, presentation on accelerated dwelling units. Ruben Barrera. Ruben's from Building and Safety.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ruben Barrera. I'm the county building official, and I'm here to talk about accessory dwelling units. Before I start talking too much about accessory dwelling units, I wanted to give you a very brief overview of what we do in building and safety, so that we can put it in the context and know how it affects and how we are dealing with ADUs. So, in building and safety, we are responsible for enforcing the construction regulations of the state. So, we're all about, or mostly about, safety, although we do enforce other provisions, such as energy conservation, and all the requirements for plumbing, electrical and mechanical systems in new buildings throughout Ventura County. So, we enforce the building codes, mostly the state building codes and some local regulations. And we also are, we act as a clearinghouse to ensure that all the interested agencies and departments that have regulations affecting construction are approving these projects before we issue a building permit to commence construction. And then during the construction process, we do inspections, thorough inspections, at several stages of construction until the project is completed. And once it's completed, we certify the building for occupancy, and the occupant or the owner is given the green light to occupy the building. So, when we issue the building permit, or to issue the building permit, we also review plans for compliance with all these provisions, so we ensure that the design is adequate, and that all the engineering and detailing on the plans is going to be clear. And these are basically the instructions on how to build a house that the contractor follows. So, we look at all that. We look at the engineering, the calculations, and then if everything is okay, then we're ready to issue the building permit, and we collect some fees, and then we're done. Then construction can begin. So, in a sense, we're like a clearinghouse, and of course, this is done through a cooperative effort with several other departments, as I mentioned, including planning, environmental health, public works, and several other, like the fire department and several other agencies or districts that collect fees, water, sanitation, and that sort of thing. So, we do all of that. We have created some standard plans for the construction of accessory dwelling units, and I wanted to kind of share a few things with you.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. I just have, I have a general question.
Yes.
Are any of the code requirements compromised by this program?
No.
None?
None.
Thank you.
Okay. So, first of all, the main drive behind this effort to create standardized drawings for accessory dwelling units, and I'll get a little bit more into what standardized means, but basically, it was because the farming community raised concerns about the permitting process being too complicated and too costly. So, one of the things that the county did was we decided to help that community by drawing a set of plans for three different sizes of units to make it easy for this community to build some of this much-needed housing. It's also to fulfill the housing element program that planning enforces, and it's to develop pre-approved building plans for second dwelling units. So, by doing a standardized plan, we basically shortcutted the process a little bit for a lot of applicants that choose to use this plan. It's a voluntary plan. They don't have to use these plans, but if they do choose to, it's going to cut a lot of time and basically cost to the process, because the standardized plans have been pre-approved, and they meet all code requirements, and they're ready to just give to a contractor so that he can commence construction once they have a building permit. Okay? So, that's the whole, the whole purpose of this. So, sometimes you're going to hear that we use the words ADU, which is accessory dwelling unit, and farmworker housing unit interchangeably, and that's because this plan was originally intended to be for farmworker housing, but now with the new state laws and ADUs, et cetera, they can, the same plan can be used for a detached accessory dwelling unit. It does not apply for additions or interior accessory dwelling units, only for detached units. Okay? So, we will issue a permit for either one of those, whether it's farmworker housing and/or an ADU. And let me just show you a sample of the plans. This, for example, is one of the sheets in the, in the set. Our standard plans is a complete set. It's a full-size sheet of plans that the contractor can use in the field. And this is a sampling that shows a floor plan for, for the smaller unit. We have three unit sizes. One is 700 square feet, the other is a 900 square feet, and the largest is a 1,200 square foot unit. Okay? So, I'll go into those just a little bit to get you familiar with the plans. This is a 700 square foot unit. It's about 25 feet by 28 feet, and it includes a kitchen, a full bath with two sinks, a bedroom, and a living slash dining room, and also includes a small laundry closet. All three of the units are single-story units, and they're intended to be a full dwelling unit, which can accommodate a small family. These sheets are all going to look very similar, because they are, the units are similar. It's just the size and the layout that differs a little bit between each, each of the three units. This is a 900 square foot unit. It's about 30 by 30, and it's essentially the same as a 700 square foot version, but it includes an additional bedroom. So, this is a two-bedroom unit, and also contains a kitchen, the laundry, the living space, and the bathroom. It's a, so it's two bedrooms, one bath. It's a full bath. And then the larger unit is a 1,200 square foot unit. This one has three bedrooms and two baths, and can accommodate a larger family of four or six. And it's about, it's about 34 by 35 feet, and in essence, this is, these are all small houses, but this is the larger of the three. Okay? So, what we did is we put together a complete set of plans. What you see here is just a sheet, sheet 2.1, which shows a roof plan, and it shows a floor plan, and one of the sections, and some notes, but we have a full, complete set of drawings that includes general notes and specifications. It includes a foundation plan. It includes lots of structural detailing, so that, as I said earlier, the contractor can use, use the plans and actually build this thing. Okay? So, this is an example of one of those other sheets that's used for reference, and includes a lot of structural connections and specifications for the foundation, for the roof, for the walls, et cetera. Most of this is very conventional construction, so they're very easy to build. These can be built by a contractor that has average skills. It doesn't have to be a very experienced contractor, you know? I mean, some contractors have expertise in other areas. They just have to be familiar with wood construction, and they should be able to build this thing with these plans.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Do you have any estimates of cost for the construction? Do you have any idea what these are costing?
You know, it'll vary quite a bit, and it depends on the contractor and the site, because access sometimes adds cost to the project, but we're thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of about $120 to $130 a square foot. So, in addition to the plans themselves, we, we give the customer a, a guide sheet that was prepared by the environmental health division, and this is intended to help customers that are on properties that use a private sewage disposal system or septic system, and it helps them size it, or at least determine whether or not their existing system can accommodate the extra unit. It gives us all the information that's required for all three units, and it's fairly detailed, but it's succinct and to the point, and this will give the customer some information early on to make that determination, because sometimes they don't want to go through the expense of having to upsize their system or build a new system for this ADU. So, if it cannot accommodate it, they will know right away. So, one of the other things that we do is, that we prepare, is that we give the customer some standard information and checklist and guide sheets. You should have a copy of these, I think you may have, but it's just a sample of the information that we give to customers when they come to inquire about these standard plans that are counter. We've been advertising it somewhat. We, every chance we get, we tell customers that these are available. The plans are available free of charge. We don't charge them for the plans. It makes the plan review process very, very quick, and it reduces several weeks or perhaps even months from the process of having a, you know, a custom set of plans that they, you know, if they were to prepare some plans like that and bring them in, we would have to review those thoroughly to make sure that they meet code, et cetera, and that takes some time. So, these sheets give the customers general information about what it takes to use one of these standard plans, and the information that we will need, because we will need some information from them, such as a site plan, and they will have to prepare a fire sprinkler plan for the fire department. And in the case of the larger home, the 1,200 square foot home, they will need a soils report, because it's required by ordinance that anything over 1,000 square feet have a soils report. And in some cases, even the smaller units may require a soils report if they're proposing to build in an area that's, that's known to have a geologic hazards, for example, or if we know that they've got bad soils. So, so some of the site conditions will vary, and in some cases, they will need to provide a little bit more information, but the actual construction drawings are there for them if they choose to use them. One of the conditions that we have, and that's, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Did you have a question?
I'm sorry. Just quickly, bad soils, meaning expansive soils, meaning subject to liquefaction? What do you mean bad soils?
Either, all of the above. I mean, sometimes the soils can have, yeah, they can be expansive, which means they heave, it's too much clay, and so in those cases, we require deepened footings and more extensive foundation systems. It could be sulfates in the soil, which are corrosive to concrete. Then we would specify a different type of concrete or cement that's used in the concrete to mitigate those, those problems, or liquefaction and things like that. Sometimes it's a slide, or some, some more significant geologic problem, and so if it's, if it's known that they have one of these conditions, then our public works staff gets involved, and, you know, they will, they will probably mandate a geology report or a soils report, and ask for recommendations from the geologists on how to mitigate those issues before we will issue the permit.
Does the county have some kind of mapping tool to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
And, and this is available for, for people, for their information to see if they can go forward?
Yes, I believe so. It's in our GIS system, and I believe that's available to the public.
So, no surprises?
No surprises, if they look.
Okay.
Some, some people don't know to look, but our staff will guide them if, if they come in and talk to us or the planning. We all guide them in the direction that they need to get the resources and information they need before they prepare the plans and before they commit to building this. So, we don't, they don't like surprises, we don't like to give them surprises. So, that's kind of our approach.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so these sheets give them all of the, the general information they're going to need upfront, and what they need to bring in. And then the process is to, once they've committed and they've decided to do this, they will bring in a site plan, and they will go to the various agencies, starting with planning, and then maybe to environmental health, if they're going to put in a, a septic system, or they need to go there anyway, just to make sure that the septic system is, is adequate. And once they get those clearances, then they go to building and safety, submit a building permit application, and show us a site plan and their clearances. We will review the site plan for some of these basic things that I've, that I've mentioned, excuse me, and that usually will be done either over the counter or within a day or two. And, and if everything is okay, and all their clearances are there, they pay some fees, and we issue the building permit, and they can start construction. So, that whole process can take anywhere from a few days, a few days to a few weeks. If there, if there are some difficult site conditions that need to be dealt with, it may take a little bit longer. But in, in any case, this process is intended to shorten that process significantly. Let's see. Well, I'm sorry. It's, okay. So, I think that's basically what I wanted to say. We, we are telling customers, and we're getting a lot of inquiries from customers that seem to have some interest. They're asking us for copies of the plan, so that they can discuss this with, with the contractor. They could price it out and see if it's something that they, that they want to do. And so, our staff is letting them know that these plans are available. This is a new program, so we haven't issued any building permits yet for, for an ADU using these standard plans. We've issued many permits for other ADUs where they, they use their own plans, but nothing where they use these plans. And one of the conditions of using our standard plan is that if they decide to use it, they have to use that plan, because some, some contractors or building owners have asked if they can change it, maybe make it just a little bit larger, or put the bathroom on this side and do this and that. And so, our, these plans are not designed to be used as-is with any changes, and if they do propose any changes, then we have to go through a review process that we normally do. So, it's, so then they would have to go to a designer, put the changes on a separate plan, and then we would review that plan, and that takes a little bit longer. So, they have to, they have to weigh those options and those benefits, and some of them are deciding just to do their own plans, because they don't want to build it just like this. These are, in some cases, too simple, too straightforward, and maybe they want something that's a little bit better, a little bit more elaborate, or maybe something that fits the site or the existing architecture of the other buildings a little bit more than this would do. Although, these plans have, allow for some options and different materials to be used, but they are fairly limited in changing them. And I must say, just to finish, we do have some restrictions. For example, we, we do not allow the use of these plans up in the Lockwood Valley area of the county, because they have not been designed to, to hold snow loads on the roof. And the reason we did that was because if we designed this to hold snow loads, it's going to be a lot more expensive and a heavier structure to design and to build, and the cost will go up where, in many cases, they're not going to be in a snow load area. So, so we just decided to do it without the snow load, and so it would not work in that area. Or, of course, if it's in an area that's got severe or significant geologic areas, the foundation system for these plans could not accommodate that, and they would have to get the recommendations of the soils engineer or geologist to, to give us different design systems for the foundation. So, anyway, so that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to.
Thank you. Commissioner Oster?
Requirements for garages, parking? I didn't see any.
Um, my understanding is that, and we generally do not, in building and safety, do not enforce the parking provisions for housing. That's done by planning, but my understanding is that they, the state does not allow the county to enforce parking requirements for, for these. But Commissioner Oster?
The planning division does require parking on lots that are less than an acre in size. So, most farming properties, agricultural properties are larger than that, and there is no requirement for covered parking space. However, Ruben and I talked about this earlier. I'm very proud that the Resource Management Agency and the board has directed the, the building and safety to develop these plans, but in addition to that, they also have a standard design for a fairly simple garage, and they have a standard design for a carport. So, we've been directing people to say, hey, if you're really interested in having a garage, then you can use their design, and I think it goes up to 900 square feet for the garage, and then the carport's a various size, too. So, we've had people, we use those, those plans quite, quite frequently. But if you do not have, if you have over an acre, you don't require covered parking. If you're less than an acre, for a single-family dwelling, you require two parking spaces, and an ADU, one parking space, but it does not need to be covered. The accessory dwelling unit just has to be on the site, the parking spot on the site.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Dukas?
Generally speaking, if someone wanted to do this, their first rule of, their, the first thing that they should do is get a soils report?
No, the first thing they should do is they need to talk with planning. That's the first thing they should do.
The first step is to talk with planning?
Yes.
And then planning will?
Plan, so planning will determine whether or not they can build this unit on that site at the location that they want to build it, and if they give them the green light to do that, then they should, they should talk with environmental health to make sure that the septic system on-site can accommodate it, and if not, if they're willing to build a new one. And then the next step is to talk with us at building and safety, because we will let them know if, in fact, they need a soils report or not. If they go out and spend money on a soils report and they don't need it, it's just, you know, $800 or $2,000 that they don't need to spend. So, we will direct them to do that, and, you know, usually the soils report is not prohibitive unless it's a, like a geology problem. If it's a soils problem, it's typically not going to kill the project.
But generally speaking, because people may feel that they're getting a runaround, where in fact, there's a process to follow. So, the first place to go is planning, and then environmental health for the septic, if it applies, and the third thing is building and safety?
Building and safety.
Anything beyond that?
And then when they go to building and safety, we will give them a listing of who else they need to speak with, and most of the time, it doesn't have to be in order. They just need to go to the fire department, for example. They need to go to the sanitation district. They need to go to the water agency, and if they need to go to the public works agency to review the soils report, we'll tell them all those. We'll give them a checklist with contact information and an address where they can visit or call them, and then they will have to visit these agencies or departments on their own until they, you know, get those clearances. So, for example, when they go to the fire department, and by the way, we have a fire department representative that, that's here every week, one, one day a week, that can give them that information right here at the counter, so that they don't have to go to Camarillo. But with the fire department, the fire department will say, okay, we need a copy of your site plan. We're going to need, we're going to need the fire sprinkler plan, and if you don't have those, you know, go hire somebody to do these plans for you, and then come back when you have them, drop them off, and we'll review them. I think it's within about a week or so that they will review them, make sure that it's adequate for this, for the building and for the site, because the site conditions dictate how to design the system. You know, how much water is available, the size of the service, et cetera. And so, they review all of that, and once they've, they're good with it, and they have, like, good access for emergency vehicles, et cetera, they will give them a clearance, and so that's done. So, then they have to go to, you know, whoever else applies, and then get those clearances. And so, that could take a few weeks, but then they come back to building and safety once they have those, and bring all of their clearances and their, and their site plan. And then we will pull a standard plan out of our, out of a drawer, and give, you know, review that, give them the set, and issue the permit.
When you say whoever else, what do you mean?
Well, whoever else applies for the project. So, in some cases, we would send them to the sanitation district if there's a sewer main on that line that would serve the property, but if there's no sewer main, then they have a private sewage disposal system, so we would not send them to the sanitation district. So, every project-
Is there, are there any other entities that people-
Yes, if they have, for example, a well on the property, and they're not served by a public water company, we would, we would send them to the public works agency's watershed division, you know, and, and back to environmental health to verify that they have adequate, you know, an adequate well to serve this unit. Generally speaking, because this is an ADU, you have those systems already in place for the main house, and it's not going to be a problem, but we want to make sure that those systems can accommodate the extra unit, so they have to go there. And so, depending on their site, depending on their situation and conditions, we will guide them. We will give them a list of who they need to go to. So, it's not the same list for everybody. Every project is similar, but they don't, you know, they, they could differ. School districts, for example, things like that. I mean, agencies like that.
For, for a single accessory dwelling unit, you'd, you'd need to contact the school district?
Usually, for new homes, we always refer them to the school district, but I don't know that they're going to collect a fee. Usually, it's just a fee that they pay, but I think they're exempt under the state provisions. But we want to see that. We want to see that they, you know, that they've covered it, and they, they have basically an exemption letter.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're not going to have to pay Quimby fees, or, you know, like park district fees or stuff like that.
Right.
Okay, so-
Correct.
Anything, anything else? Potentially?
Well, I mean, there's also, at the very end of the process, when the contractor is ready to get the, the building permit, we ask them to go to the downstairs here on the, on the hall of administration, to the IWMD, the Integrated Waste Management District, to ensure that they have a manifest of what they're going to recycle during the construction process. So, that's usually something they can do in, you know, 20, 30 minutes. They go downstairs, they let them, the contractor usually knows by that point what he's going to recycle, if he has cardboard, or wood, or concrete, or whatever, and then he would give that form to them, and then they would sign it off.
And that, and that's a state requirement?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Gee, I wonder why people thought it was complicated?
Because it's complicated.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Well done. Thank you.
Commissioner Oster?
Domestic water, obviously, sometimes is problematic in the county, and a lot of us are served by mutual water companies, et cetera. Will they require a will serve letter for a separate structure if they're already receiving domestic water from a purveyor?
Yes. Our standard process is to have the customer go to the water purveyor and give them a clearance that they can accommodate this additional house. Basically, it's another house.
So, it's a will serve letter?
It's a will serve letter, yes.
Thank you.
Ruben?
Yes.
The initial impetus for these plans was addressing, you said, concerns of the ag community as, as it relates to housing and affordable, and it kind of segued into just affordable, covering affordable housing in general because of the state law that was passed, as I understood your presentation.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first part of that question?
Yeah.
I mean, the main impetus-
This originally was, was, plans were put together to try to address the concerns of ag community.
Yes.
And a seg, a segue to that was, it also addresses the affordable housing needs of the county.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so our initial vision for these plans was to create farmworker housing.
Correct.
And we said, well- And we said, what's a, you know, farmworker housing, farmworker housing. And then as we started having a conversation about issuing permits for the farmworker housing, we said, well, what if somebody wants to use it and they don't have a farm? And then this whole ADU law came into play, and we said, you know what? There's no problem with letting them use it as an ADU. So, we didn't really create anything different or change the plans in any way. We just added the word ADU to farmworker housing, and now it's a, it's a, you know, it's a plan that can, can be used for a much-needed service, we believe.
Okay. I have a question that relates to what we're talking about here and the impact of the recent Thomas fire. Do we have any idea how many structures we lost in the county jurisdiction?
Yes, we lost-
I know we lost-
About 200 homes now. That number could vary like two or three either, you know, because some of our damage assessment information that we, that we receive is changing almost daily because some initial, some initial reports or inspections were that a house was destroyed, and the addressing was a little complicated, so we, it was put on the wrong place. And so, we're modifying that a little bit, but generally, it's between 197 and 201, I believe, homes, homes that were destroyed. Now, there were about another 200, 250 structures that were not homes, private garages, detached buildings, you know, barns and storage sheds and things like that.
Wasn't there also in part, at least one apartment building that was lost? Was several?
Yes, well, there was some dorms in the school. I don't know if you're referring to those, but there was also one that was listed as an apartment building, but it was only like a, like a three-unit, it was a house that was converted to apartments. That is what it looked like.
That's Hawaiian Gardens?
Pardon?
That was Hawaiian, Hawaiian Gardens, I think it was.
I don't know the name, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
I ask the question because as people are getting into the recovery mode, I suspect there are going to be residents or properties that are underinsured, and this type of availability might be an ultimate end-of-the-road operation for them, or it could be a temporary housing situation.
Yes.
Because I think most people are of the mind that reconstruction is in a two- to three-year time window, and so there needs to be some sort of temporary housing if, in fact, you know, they want to put temporary housing on-site. If that happened, one of these structures could, in fact, act as a secondary building to the primary residence awaiting construction. Is that correct?
Absolutely, and we have had several inquiries with exactly that question. The question is, can I build this ADU, live in it, until I resolve all my claims with my insurance company and build my permanent residence, and then when I do that, then I can move into my house and keep this as an ADU? And the answer is yes.
Those that have the property, following that, that line of thought, those that have the property and have to rebuild, total burnout, are RVs or temporary mobile homes an option as, as, you know, additional dwelling unit?
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes, you can utilize a RV as long as it has a connection to a sewer or septic system and a permanent source of water. There is a process to get a permit, and we've had people starting to come in and get the permit for RVs. It's a temporary dwelling during, during, after the disaster, and you can stay in that for a year. And then you have another year after you pull a building permit. You can stay in a temporary housing during development, once you have a permit, and then you can get another additional two years if you need that to live on, an RV on your property.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is an excellent program. And a long dated agriculture, and now housing situation, I would say, is appropriate.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Ruben, thank you very much. We have no other questions.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item seven, PL 17-0095, Miners Oaks Water District staff.
Okay, well, while I'm waiting, I'll introduce myself. My name's Franco Rosengren. Thank you, Chair Rodriguez, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm the case planner for the project before you today, which is project number PL 17-0095. It's a request for the authorization to continue the public utility storage yard and storage building for a 30-year period. The applicant is the Miners Oaks Water District, and the general manager, Mike Hallibrands, is in attendance today. So, after the presentation, if you have any questions, he's available to answer those. The project site is located in Miners Oaks, which is situated at the mid-northern section of the Ojai Valley. It's bordered by the community of Miramonte to the south and the city of Ojai to the east. The project site's zoning is open space 20 acres minimum lot size, and the general plan designation is open space urban reserve. It is also part of the Ojai Valley Area Plan, which is designated open space 20 acres. The parcels to the north, west, and south of the project site have a zoning designation of open space 20 acres as well, and the parcel to the east is zoned agriculture-exclusive 40 acres minimum lot size. The surrounding development is also within the Ojai Valley Area Plan with designations of open space 20 acres and 40 acres and the same general plan designation of open space urban reserve. The project site is located at 2680 Maricopa Highway, also known as Highway 33 in Miners Oaks. The lot size is 3.89 acres, and the current layout of the facility is, there are three water tanks there and the existing 1,800-square-foot storage building. I want to bring to your attention that the water tanks are actually not part of the proposed project and not under the jurisdiction of the local planning and building and safety jurisdiction. Those are actually under the jurisdiction of the State Department of Water Resources. So, they are not part of the project. The surrounding development is agricultural crop production, primarily orchards. There are two residences in, near the project site that are, one is 80 feet north, and the other one is approximately 300 feet south. So, access to the site is gained from Highway 33 to an access road easement that is approximately 700 feet from the actual entrance to the facility. And from the access easement, the applicant gains access to the facility through a seven-foot tall electric gate with barbed wire for security. Here's a panoramic view of the project site. On the left, you can see the existing storage building and the three storage, water storage Here are some elevation views of the existing storage building looking west, south, and The Miners Oaks Water District has owned, has owned and operated the public water facilities since the 1950s, and in October 1986, the Planning Commission approved a CUP, CP 4374, for the 1,800-square-foot metal structure building to store the district's materials and equipment for a 20-year period. That permit expired in 2006, and the Planning Division was made aware that the CUP actually expired. We became aware of that in 2015 and notified the district and let them know that they would need to submit an application for renewal. In 2017, because the district had not submitted an application for a renewal, a violation case was opened up, and the Code Compliance Division submitted a notice of alleged violation to the district. Subsequently, a couple months later, the district did apply for the CUP to replace the expired CUP. That's the subject of today's hearing, and they entered into a compliance agreement with the county to allow them to continue to use a public storage yard and the building during the CUP renewal process. During the CUP renewal process, staff became aware that, through a complaint, a citizen complaint, that the district's fence, part of the district's fence and gate was located within the easement area, and upon notification of that information, the district came in and obtained a zoning clearance to relocate the fence and gate outside of the easement and within their property lines, and that has already been done. So, as I briefly mentioned at the beginning, the applicant requests that a conditional use permit be granted to authorize the continued use of the public storage building and yard for a 30-year period. And more specifically, the applicant requests approval to continue to use the 1,800-square-foot building, install approximately 4,900 square feet of impervious surface, and the site will also continue to utilize the seven-foot-tall electric security gate and the fencing around the property. There'll be one portable toilet for district personnel, and there is also a designated trash and recyclable bins area. So, here's the site plan that they submitted, and you can see the three water tanks here. Over here is the existing storage building. Directly south of that will be an area that will be paved. The portable toilet is there, and then the designated trash area is below that. The entrance to the site is down here. The gate was originally at this location, which was in the easement area, and then now it's pushed back within their property boundaries. The project description also includes the hours of operation to be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., except for an emergency, and that is actually the same hours of operation that the previously approved permit allowed. And the storage yard will continue to contain limited outdoor storage consisting of district materials like pipes and valves and fittings and some materials for backfilling. Here is the elevation plans and floor plans of the existing storage building. Nothing's changed. As you can see, these are the plans from 1986. They're not very clear, but-
We have a question.
Yes.
Could you go back to the previous slide? Materials for backfilling, does that include sand? What, what does that mean?
I would have to defer that to the applicant. I'm assuming that some of it's dirt and possibly sand, but I would feel more comfortable having the applicant explain exactly what that is.
Okay, I'll save that then. Thank you.
So, the project was reviewed in compliance with the California Environment Equality Act, and planning staff determined that it was categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301B existing facilities because it's an existing facility with negligible change. The Planning Division provided public notification of the proposed project and the planning, um, Planning Commission public hearing to property owners within 1,500 feet of the project site. We did receive one public comment. We also placed an ad in the Ventura County Star, as well as the Ojai Valley Newspaper, which is not on the screen, but we did do that as well, and posted it on our Planning Division website. Staff also notified the city of Ojai, and no comments were provided by them. And although the projects in the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council's jurisdiction, Supervisor Bennett's office indicated that it wasn't necessary for them to review this As mentioned, we did receive one public comment, and those concerns are regarding compatibility, public safety, and aesthetics, and more specifics are in Exhibit 5 of the staff report. Planning staff did respond to each of those comments, and our comments are in Exhibit 6 of the staff report. So, in order for your commission to approve the proposed project, certain findings must be met, and staff has determined that all seven findings have been made, and staff's analysis is included in Section E of the staff report. Therefore, based on everything in the staff report and any public comments received, the planning staff recommends that your commission take the following actions. Those actions are in the staff report under Section G, so I'm not going to read each one off for you unless you prefer that I do that. And that concludes my presentation. I also want to let you know that the environmental health staff is available if you do have any questions for them. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions with staff? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Disclosures by the commission.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Oster.
I have no disclosures.
And I have no disclosures. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. I have three-speaker cards, four-speaker cards. Excuse me, three-speaker cards. In opposition, okay. Presentation by the applicant.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Mike Hallibrands. I'm the general manager of Miners Oaks Water District. Just to, just to give you a brief summary of the district. Miners Oaks Water District was formed and duly incorporated and certified by the Secretary of the State in 1949. This was done under the provisions of Chapter 592, Acts of the 1913 Session of Legislature in the state of California. Since our formation and for the subsequent 69 years, Miners Oaks Water District continues to serve approximately 4,200 people through almost 1,300 connections with almost 2 million gallons of storage of water, the bulk of it that you saw on one of the slides. I can answer any questions that you'd like.
Yes, we do have a question. Commissioner Dukas.
Generally speaking, what's in that, are you planning to change the surface that is around that facility? Are you going to pave it, or is it, it says in impervious paving or?
Yeah, we had looked and tentatively made some plans to maybe put some asphalt there. As mentioned, our trash receptacle is up there. The trash truck frequently has to go up that hill, and it's dirt after the concrete, and during the rains, it can get muddy, and they've gotten stuck, and so this would eliminate his need to go out onto the dirt area and get stuck. He could stay on the pavement, dump the trash.
So, you're not going to pave the whole spot, just a portion of it?
Just a small portion of that area. Yes, ma'am.
And generally speaking, the outside storage, one of the things was backfilling materials. How much are we talking and what kind of materials?
The materials vary at times, just depends on what we need for, they're usually project-specific. they're usually project-specific. So sometimes it entails sand, and we use a lot of sand for backfill around our pipes, trenches. Sometimes it requires usually just natural dirt. If we get a clean excavation, we'll store that dirt and we'll use it for recompaction or reuse at another site. But typically, it's just stored there and then hauled off once a year by a contractor.
And does that cycle through regularly? Or it's on an as-needed basis? Like if you need to repair something and you're backfilling a trench or something?
Yeah, we do keep some stand storage there. The amount is, I would say, negligible. It's probably about four yards.
Okay.
You know, it's usually on a minimum. We don't keep a giant stockpile of sand. So if we need it there for an emergency, if we have a leak, we can go ahead and access that sand versus calling it in via truck.
Uh-huh. So there isn't like a big pyramid, a dune, that's blowing in the wind?
No, it is a small pile, but yeah, no, it's not the size of this room.
Yeah, four yards is about how big?
Probably the area from where the Secretary is sitting to the front of your area here. Sometimes it gets spread out. We'll use a little bit of it. It spreads out. It's a small amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Austin. I have a question. It's really not related to the project. But there was a comment in the staff report that said the Upper Ventura River groundwater basin is not in overdraft. Is that correct? I thought it was.
That the Upper Ventura River basin is not in overdraft?
Yes.
I don't believe that it's in overdraft.
Oh, it's either been found to be in overdraft or not. That's my question. I thought it was.
Well, studies are ongoing with that. So we're constantly moving the newly-formed GSA in that area, which we're involved with. We are currently doing studies on that now.
As I said, unrelated to your project, but we need to know those things. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no specific questions for you. Is there anybody else? You're going to be the speaker for the applicant? You are the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no speakers. Okay.
Yeah, I guess we do.
And I need to go back on his disclosures and say that I am acquainted with Lindsey Nielsen, who is your speaker.
I don't intend to speak unless of our rebuttal is necessary. But if that's true, then I'd do it for 40 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I don't know you from Adam.
Okay, I have speaker cards in this order. Susan Mall, Morgan Gatlin, I think, and Lorna Beal Burl. And if the speakers would state your name for the record and your address.
Do I need to? Hi there. My name is Susan Mall, and I live at 2800 Maricopa Highway. This is my son, who's with me. And he actually lives in Milwaukee, but he's looking to relocate here. And he's helping me temporarily. I'm a little nervous, but I'm not used to talking into a microphone. I am the neighbor that borders three sides of Miners Oaks Water District. Miners Oaks Water District is like an island. And there's a 30-foot easement, about 700 feet long. And they have a non-exclusive easement along with me, who I have things underneath the highway, the driveway. And then there's the utilities and all of that. So it's not only Miners Oaks easement. I don't, you know, I think my biggest problem is is that I just feel that they've been a terrible steward of the land. It used to be a reservoir, and then it was turned into a dump site. And I do have a quote from the ex-board member, I think it was, or a current board member that I think has been a board member for eight years now, who said that it was a dump site for a number of years. And I have that in the packet with you. So I have that copy for you, and it was in their approved minutes. Also, because it was a landfill and dump site, and it wasn't properly remediated, the ground is sinking. And so they have to constantly put and repave the property. If you look, I also have three photographs of different periods where they've had to repave and put concrete in, and they're constantly having to adjust it. On this permit here, it says that they're going to be installing 4,900 square feet of asphalt, impervious surface. They've already got a lot of impervious surface on that property, which you can see how much they've already added concrete to it, as well as they are proposing another 11,000 square feet of asphalt. And that's in their approved minutes. So, I mean, and that was just, I think it was about a month ago. And I have that also in your packet. When the storage facility was put in in 1996, it was to clean up the parcel. And it was meant so that, and it's right here in the original CUP. It says, "The water district's property has been used for storage of water and equipment since 1959. The proposed metal building will enable the district to store items out of the weather and to dress up the parcel." So the trucks and everything were meant to be in that 1,800-square-foot building. So what they're doing is they're just expanding their use. They're asking to put their trucks outside. They're asking now to put sand outside, which is going to end up being more than they said, just like the amount of asphalt they intend to put on that property. And it's just part of what they do, you know? I don't know where to even go from here. I have to look at my notes. I think, well, as far as the easement and the gates and everything on the property, there is a discrepancy with the surveys and with what they are referencing, which is a parcel map. There are two recorded surveys, one done in 1951 and one done in 1956, which I also have in your packet. And then I also have the parcel map that's in your packet. On the parcel map, the 1976 parcel map, which they're referencing as their survey, there are numerous mistakes, and I've highlighted the areas of those mistakes. And I've also had the county GIS people make a correction on one of the parcel maps, I mean, that parcel map in particular. And that is also, their correction is in the packet as well. The last survey that was done on the property was done by a private surveyor, and this is on Miners Oaks property, was done by a private surveyor. His name was Mr. Drawn, D-R-O-N. And he has, he was a registered engineer, and his number, he's RE224. All the markers surrounding Miners Oaks Water District, there are five markers in total with that number, RE224, which is also referenced in their deed, and it's also on the 1956 map, have been removed. There's not one of them left. Now, regarding the fencing, I think it's negligent for them...
I'm sorry, the survey markers have been removed?
All the survey markers are no longer there. All the 224 markers are no longer there.
Have they been replaced with some other survey?
Well, there's hubs. They put in wooden hubs. They have put in some pins into the ground. They haven't recorded the survey, and that was done over a year ago. It should have been checked by the county surveyor's office. I think they might be planning on doing a record of survey. When I first moved there, they asked me for a lot line adjustment. And I asked, I was just, why would they need a lot line adjustment unless they've encroached on my land and they need to do it? I just think it's negligent for them to even consider putting up fences without having the boundaries defined and not just doing it on the honor system. And it's not up to me. They don't need to convince me. They need to convince the county surveying office, the head guy. I forget his name. Right now, I can't remember his name. But anyway, they need to convince him. What else? Well, as far as the gates, too. On the easement, it specifically states, "In their deed and in their title report, as an encumbrance in Schedule B of their title report, it says that there is to be a gate at the highway right-of-way, and there is to be a gate at the end of the easement, at the 2.105 acres. No gate in between, period. That's drainage on both sides." Yes, they've regraded it. Yes, they've moved the grading over. But that is clearly a covenant that runs with their land. And just like my easement, their easement, I can't change it unless there's another document that states otherwise. And I've also given you those documents. I've given you, I haven't given you the complete preliminary title report, but I'm happy to go ahead and print all pages. I just figured there were too many pages, but I have that. But I printed out the one page. So you have those documents as well. Right now, their fence is, was done, I feel almost spitefully because it doesn't even make sense the way they've done it. It comes down this way, then it goes back up, and then it goes at an angle. And then they've got another fence that connects to nothing. And it's just because they're trying to take as much land as they possibly can. And they're really stubborn about it. Even when I've told them that that's not where their gates are supposed to be according to their deed, they don't feel they have to comply with it. They just feel that it doesn't matter. I mean, I have to comply with their easement, you know? It's just, it is what it is. I have some photographs also as well here. And you can see the fence. This is how they've done it. This is where their fence was.
Those same, you need to go back to the mic because we are recorded. But they're in our packet as well, right?
Yes, they're in your packet, but you can see that the way the fence is done. And you can see here how the grading, how they regraded it. It's already, the concrete's already coming out.
Wait a minute. Wait. I need to find it. Hold on just a second.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
It's okay. Hold on just a second.
I may have a different picture of the fence than what you have.
This packet?
Yes.
Okay. I'm ready.
So all of this was done around 2012, and the property was in foreclosure. They repaved the easement. They regraded all of this area here. You can see that the fence is fairly new. And they also, a telephone pole was replaced in the whole creek bed in like 2013. And I was told that they had taken out, like, truckloads of debris and just trash, trying to open it up. And then here you can see, this is where the fence was, at the 2.105 acres. That's also in your packet. You can see all the mounds. This is what it's going to end up turning, looking like in a very short amount of time if they have their way. But the fence was to be up here. And then there's also a fence, this is a terrible picture, by the way, but this was from their 2000, their 1996 CUP. And my printer ran out of ink, and then I lost it. So, but you can see there's a fence right here at the highway right-of-way. And this is the fence that I've installed in the highway right-of-way. And you have both of those pictures as well. And this was from their 1996 CUP. So there was a gate there, and there was a gate at the top of the 2.105 acres. And it was only recently, when the property was in foreclosure, that they moved their fence down and did all this grading and paved and did everything else. I really feel that the fence was not built with the intention of securing their land. Rather, it was built in that location to gain as much property as possible. It would be so much more efficient and safe and secure if their gate was located at the 2.105 acres. If the gate was properly placed, as thoughtfully stated in their grant deed, both parties would have access to the drainage throughout the years, and the gate could easily open on a slider, removing any need to unsafely stop on any kind of incline. It would just go like this. It would have had one-third less of fencing. I mean, the way they've done this, it's like, it's a maze. And all, this doesn't even close anything off. It was just meant to look unsightly. You know, this isn't the first time they've done this to me. When it came to the trash can, they have a large dumpster. When I've asked them just to move the dumpster off my property, they called the trash company, E.J. Harrison, I think it is. And they had it picked up and dropped off in front of my property. And it was at an angle. So literally, I'd have to go, I had to swerve around it. When I asked Mike Colbranz to move it, and I made several complaints about it, he commented it was appropriate where it was. And it's just, I mean, it's just not right. So, but finally, after calling Caltrans and calling people, they finally put the trash can on their property. And now they're saying that's why they need to put the paved asphalt in. But when you look at the picture, it's, the trash can is before where they want to put all the asphalt in their diagram. I, I mean, I feel before we go forward with, you know, any more agreements, especially a 30-year CUP, I think we need to just comply with the original conditions of their deed. It's obvious that they let it go for 10 years. And I don't even know that they, you know, had to pay an extra fee. You know, I know they were supposed to have that, do this within a year. But they haven't, you know, all the tanks aren't painted. The Butler Building, you know, is white, you know? It's not a buff tan. The eucalyptus trees that are in the back are on their property, but there's no way they can trim them. I just need the other one, the drainage. This is what's, this is what's happening back there. Because it was a reservoir, their land is sinking behind me. And they put their, they don't want this liability. I think they've literally moved the property down. So what they've done is all these eucalyptus trees that were on their property are now on this side. So there's no way for them to even trim the trees or do anything. And it's actually a mess, and I was really concerned. And, you know, I would love to be able to talk to him and say, how are we going to handle this with the drainage? Because I know that originally, the property was built so that the drainage went around, they had a drainage ditch that went around, but they've rechanged, they completely changed the drainage. I think I have a drawing from their original CUP that shows, and it's in your packet, you know, and it's just a loose drawing from them showing that there's water and drainage that goes around the property that no longer can go there. And we know after what's happening with Santa Barbara that if you have a channel and you don't clear it out, it might not happen this year, next year. But in 10 years, it could be a massive, it could just take out my road. And it could be a real mess. So there's a reason why it was thoughtfully said in the deed where these gates were to be, to secure both properties and to also allow to take care of this natural runoff. And the truth is... And the truth is, there were periods of time that the property owner at 2800 Maricopa Highway wasn't there, and Miners Oaks Water District would have had to maintain that area. And then there's times where Miners Oaks Water District was a terrible steward and let it become a landfill for 10 years, as stated by one of the board, the current board member.
Could you point that out?
Sure.
I noticed that you have it, but I haven't had time to read it thoroughly.
Can you find that one for me, Morgan, where it says?
Let's see, this is in the minutes.
Right, it says eight-year board member dump site statement.
Yeah, but look at the second page, there should be a second page on there.
I know, there's a whole packet, I don't have time to read this right now.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't point it out clearly. I'll tell you where it is, it's right here, it's page two, it's on the bottom paragraph. Mr. Krump Schmidt stated, well, this is after we were talking about, you know, what's happening with the reservoir and all the, you know, we were, I was having a problem with the water runoff and the issues that drain into their tank area, and they quoted me as saying that I had taken care of all the runoff. And I was concerned that I was going to be responsible for replacing, you know, a million-dollar tank.
Okay, so this says, Mr. Krump Schmidt stated that at one time, the property was used as a dump site and was kept as such for a long time, until it was decided that the spot, to be the spot for the existing tank. Okay, and Mr. Krump Schmidt is?
A board member, a current board member.
And has been for?
I think he was the vice president.
Thank you. Also, you have photos here that are clearly?
Yes.
Okay, explain where these are and?
These, okay, when I first bought the property, it was pretty cleaned up, but then, right after the rain, all of a sudden, all this debris started showing up, and I started getting my, picking up guys from ACE to come over and start cleaning up the trash. And then I was told, be very careful, there's a lot of stuff in there that you don't want to touch. And then I realized shortly afterwards, I couldn't, I couldn't take it out because it's a hillside. You can see, it's like a time warp in there, you know, you're pulling out old, it's all old trash, a lot of it from the 70s, and it was an ag agricultural dump site, so I'm sure there's all kinds of ag product in there. But after each rain, more and more shows up, so even if I clean it up, you can't get And I, I mean, I just, I don't know what else to say, I mean, do you want to talk, Morgan?
Absolutely.
I have another, you know, I mean, I understand that they're incorporated, you know, I don't, don't they have to even see what their operating agreement is, or their, you know, I mean, I don't know anything about them, whether or not they, if they have, how about their, what is it called, their, what is it called when you have a, it's like your, I'm so sorry, I'm just?
Charter?
It's their, you know, their incorporation, their bylaws, and their articles, to see how things are run. I mean, they're a public company, and they, I pay property taxes, you know, they get my property taxes, they're tax exempt, all of these things. Anyway, I'm going to let you speak, Morgan, and if anybody has any questions?
Is it your testimony that after rain, after rain, trash is exposed, emanates from their property?
It's, what it is, is it's all along the side, I guess all the way in, you would, I was told also that people, that there are actually even cars underneath the, in the reservoir, that it's just people would throw really big things in there, and then a lot of trees and a lot of ag waste. But you have a lot of the smaller things that are all in the channel along the side, you'll have like bottles, you'll have maybe a gas can, things that, I think all the way up, people threw the trash in there. What's underneath there is after the rains, everything starts sinking and sliding. It didn't look that bad when I first bought the property, but then we had these huge rains, and all of a sudden, the land just like went like this, you know, you could just see it really shrinking. I was also told that one of the tanks, they used to have three tanks right bordering my property, if you look at older photographs, I don't have a copy of that, but the middle tank fell over because it was sinking, it was buckling so much.
Okay, no other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Morgan?
Can that, Lorna go before me?
Okay. All right, Lorna Burley?
Burl.
Burl, excuse me.
Burl. A lot of mispronunciations, but that's okay.
Thank you for allowing me to say a few words, and I apologize for wearing my sunglasses, but I came down from LA today, and I left my regular glasses, and I can't see and read too well, so if you'll excuse me. I'm here as Susan's mother and also Susan's business partner, we've done a lot of years of deals together, and she bought this property approximately two years ago. Within the last 10 years, with her property was vacant and the land was in foreclosure, before we purchased it, Miners Oaks Water District took advantage and disregarded, regraded the area between our properties. They erected a large barbed wire fence over our property and drainage area. They paved roads, removed a large rusted tank, and added a 750,000 gallon tank, all without permits or any other government oversight. For 10 years, they have not had a valid CUP. That's why we're asking you for only a temporary stay until the boundaries are resolved and they have completed the requirements in the original CUP. And that's basically all I'm asking for, is a stay of doing anything now until we can get a lot of this resolved. And Susan has been a wonderful tender of this property, and she lives there full-time, it is her family residence, she's living there currently with her son, my grandson, and his fiancee. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. No questions of the speaker? Okay, Morgan? Spell your last name.
Ostling, O-S-T-L-I-N-G.
Okay, thank you.
First, I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to have this discussion. I'm probably going to spend most of my time reading instead of speaking, just to keep my words very clear. Miners Oaks Water District is here today to gain an extended use permit. In the past, Miners Oaks Water District was incorrectly granted permission to build a storage facility on their water tank storage parcel using a Section 53096 exception. This was corrected by Tricia Mayer, the Planning Programs Manager. We have included two copies of the letter sent by Tricia Mayer to the general manager, Mike Holland-Bran right here, that demonstrate that. They continued to operate it after knowing full well that they were not in compliance with their agreement. In this letter, it states that the conditional use permit for the metal warehouse and storage shed was improperly granted to Miners Oaks Water District, and that it has been expired since October 2nd, 2006. This means that Miners Oaks Water District was non-legally operating a storage facility for nearly 10 years. They continued using the facility after being made aware, and according to the conditions stated in the initial CUP for the storage facility, it expressly states that upon expiration of this permit, the premises shall be restored by the peremptee to the conditions existing prior to the issuance of their permit. So that would mean that if they let their CUP expire, that they would have to go back to what it was before their CUP, which means that they are not allowed to have a storage yard or a facility. We are now about to reward them for this negative behavior by increasing the scope and range of their CUP. Miners Oaks Water District has never complied with the conditions of their initial CUP. Miners Oaks Water District should not be rewarded for their negligent behavior and repeated violations. According to the initial CUP for the warehouse and storage facility, permits would only be extended, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to just skip ahead. In addition, Miners Oaks has not complied with the authorized hours of operation. The hours of operation are between 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, with an exception for emergencies. However, Miners Oaks Water District has continually and liberally used the easement road owned by Susan Mall on her property at all hours, day and night, for matters related, for matters unrelated to water storage and water maintenance. I must linger on this point for one moment, not only have they violated their CUP, but MoD employees have been known to enter our property, one of them up until 4:30 in the morning, not on the easement road, but on our property with a flashlight, terrifying my mother while she lives alone on her property. This was used as a form of intimidation. These signs have been used repeatedly, and you can note, I will continue with it. Miners Oaks Water District, and again, I will also say that one time, one of the Miners Oaks Water District members, as he was leaving their property, I came up to him and asked him why he was here past the hours of operation, and I said, are you aware that your conditions say that you can only be here between 5:00 and 8:00? And he said, that's not, and I quote, "That's not how it works here." It is on the Miners Oaks Water District's tape that they set recording facing our property, so it's public records, you can all find it yourself. Miners Oaks Water District is attempting to establish a precedent of 24-hour access to provide services for routine maintenance of the water tanks. This requirement was never necessary in the past and should not be necessary now. After 69 years of service, why would Miners Oaks Water District require that kind of unfettered access through Susan Mall's property? Susan already allows for 24-hour emergency access and does so gladly, and she will never stop that, has no desire to stop that, she understands that's regulated, I think, by the state. But it is important that the original language remain the same. Routine maintenance and repairs are meant to be accomplished during regular operating hours. This new language regarding to the operating hours will only encourage MoD to further violate property owner Susan Mall's right to privacy and property, which they have been known to do in the past. My next concern, I guess, has a far wider range of consequences. During MoD's last public meeting on February 20th, and I only bring this up because I would imagine if they get the CUP, they will have to hire private consultants or contractors. During the last board meeting, which was on February 20th, I asked the board, the general manager, and their legal counsel if they were required to hire private consultants following the guidelines laid out to find the lowest responsible bidder. However, to my surprise, they unanimously stated that it was solely up to their discretion on who they choose to get the bids. This directly violates Condition 13, as defined by the Resource Management Agency. The board meeting is recorded on tape, you could all go ahead and make a freedom of a public records request, I believe that they'll have it up on their website in probably about two, three weeks, probably later if knowing them. According to Item 14 of the Resource Management Agency's condition reports, in the event of conflicting state or federal requirements, the district must comply with the more strict requirements. In this case, counting zoning laws should take precedence. This means open districts, or open space urban districts, laws that restrict storage yards and facilities would supersede Miners Oaks Water District's desire to operate a storage facility, because it is a necessity, it is not a necessity for their delivery and maintenance of storage. They have other parcels of land that are zoned more properly for storage facilities, why not put it there? Why are we going through the trouble of trying to change the zoning when they have other opportunities? I believe it clearly states that they have to not have another opportunity, that this is the only way that they can do it, and that's just flagrantly false. This becomes even more evident, I'm sorry. I guess I would just end it by saying, like, if, how can we expect Miners Oaks Water District to comply with any new conditions laid out in their CUP if they have never complied with past conditions? And for that reason, I ask the board to deny Miners Oaks Water District the extended use CUP. Thank you.
Don't go away. So, we have in the packet that your mom presented to us, minutes from the meeting that say, at the tank farm, that they're going to put in 11,000 square feet, not what we're looking at, which is 4,900 square feet, is that correct?
That is because if Miners Oaks does this, I've seen repeated, I've only been here for a short time, and in that short time, I've seen repeated ways to try to circumvent the law. I believe you can only add 5,000 square feet of ground coverage with a certain kind of permit, and if they were going to do the 11,000, they wouldn't be able to, so they'll do it twice. And they'll do the same thing when they get bids for workers. I've noticed that instead of going if they, I think under $40,000, they're allowed to have a bit of discretion in who they choose or something, it doesn't have to go to a public vote, and so then they will amortize the expense out over multiple months. This seems like a gross violation, in my opinion.
Okay, but you're saying that the minutes say that they are going to put in 11,000 square feet at the tank farm for asphalt?
I don't have the minutes in front of me. If that's what they say, that was recorded by their secretary.
Well, it's kind of unclear. That's why I'm asking you.
I'm sorry, may I?
Sure, sure.
I was at the meeting, so the minutes don't really reflect actually everything that was said. They're getting three bids for 11,000 square feet, and they plan on putting in 11,000 square feet. They're getting three bids for it. But I do probably even have the audio, but I'm just, it was very clear that that's what their intention is, to put in the 11,000 square feet.
Thank you.
I also wanted to make a point that I did, Mike Holland-Bran has stopped, called the county after I had a permit to put my front gate in, and he called after the fact, after it was put in, and asked them to revoke my permit. That is also in the packet, and it shows that it was done, yeah, it's in there, it's, where was, I have it in the, it was revoked. And then I also, I, they had me sign a statement agreeing to give them clickers and all of these things and everything, which I signed. But then they still wouldn't give me the okay from the county to close my gate, even though it clearly says it's, there's a gate to be at the highway right of way, and there was a gate there in the past.
I'm sorry, excuse me. When you're saying "they," who are you referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry, Miners Oaks Water District.
Okay.
So, they then came back to me and asked me to sign a covenant that would run with my land. In order to close my gate, they want me to take over a burden that is clearly on their land. And I wouldn't sign something that was going to be recorded and encumbered against my property when it's already recorded and encumbered against theirs. And that's in the packet as well. It shows the letter from the county, having Mike Holland-Bran call, it shows the agreement that I promised, that I would never block access, and that I would give them clickers, and I would take care of everything, and then there's a covenant that runs with their land that I would not sign. I've saved them thousands and thousands of dollars doing it myself. I mean, I'm trying to be a good, safe neighbor, I only make it safer for them. You know, I'm not, I would have never blocked their access, and I never will. Thank you.
Okay, are you finished with your presentation?
May I say one more sentence?
Certainly.
I just know that one of the conditions of their prior CUP is that, it says, according to the initial CUP for the warehouse and storage facilities, permits would only be extended if full compliance with all conditions have been accomplished. I don't know how, I mean, I'm a layperson, so I'm just privileged to be here, but it's, I don't understand how we could even be having discussions about continuing their CUP when we have noted violations of their CUP in the past, if that is a condition stated for their new CUP to exist. And I don't know if there are ways to circumvent that, but that just struck me as, when I was reading their CUP, as such an obvious deterrent for them to be, get a 30-year CUP.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we continue with the appellate's opportunity for rebuttal, or the applicant's opportunity? opportunity for rebuttal, some questions of staff. Mr. Wright? Give me, again, give me a history on this CUP. This is a brand-new CUP. The other, the original CUP is non-existent, is that correct?
That's correct. This is a new entitlement, so it would be a replacement of the CUP they had before with any adjustments that they'd wish moving forward.
Okay, and there was a notice of violation of the original CUP that the applicant had to come to some sort of compliance, into some sort of compliance agreement with planning on issues, what were they specifically?
Franca. Thank you, Chair Rodriguez, I'll answer that. There was no notice of violation issued to the district, there was an alleged notice of violation, although they were operating without a valid CUP, they came in and submitted an application to abate that violation. So there's no confirmed violations associated with that property.
So the fact that they're here applying for a new CUP is a compliance?
That's correct.
And why was a new CUP applied for as opposed to modifying or amending or getting compliance on the old CUP?
Because the CUP expired, the procedure is that they would need to apply for a brand-new CUP. It's null and void, the previous CUP. So if it was still valid, then yes, it would be a modification of the existing CUP.
Mr. Wright, would you speak to the issue of how this happened from the county's perspective? How it fell through the cracks?
So, the vast majority of the conditional use permits have a clause in them that it's the responsibility of the applicant to track conditions of approval and be responsible for coming in in a timely manner to extend it. Now, obviously, it's 20 years old, and so there's probably new staff at Miners Oaks, but it's not an uncommon occurrence for even property owners, for many property owners to not understand, it was their responsibility to come in and ask for a time extension through a minor modification of their existing conditional use permit. We are tracking conditional use permits much closer now, we have staff that puts notices in their outlook and in their calendars, and also automation, and condition compliance, sends letters out a year beforehand. But many of these older CUPs, and there's probably hundreds of them, have expired because the lack of monitoring by the property owner.
So the county is able to do cleanup and discover those delinquent CUP applications?
Yes, as we discover them, we send them a letter saying that they should come in and work with us. And in some cases, we're able to resolve them through zoning clearances because, say, second dwelling units laws have changed, farm worker housing laws have changed, so we're able to resolve some of them in a ministerial fashion, and others like this one where it continues to be a conditional use requirement, they must come in and get a new conditional use permit and establish ongoing operational conditions.
And without going back through my notes, the water company has owned this property and operated this property since when?
Since the 1950s. And when there was a reservoir on the property, as discussed earlier, and then the reservoir was replaced with the holding tanks, the reservoirs were in now, the waters and tanks, those activities are exempt from our land use regulatory authority, as well as Public Works grading and building and safety. So if it's directly related to the conveyance of water, the government code rises the authority up to the state level, and the planning division's not involved. When it relates to municipal water companies, that's not the case with mutuals and private water companies. They have, they are under, regulated through conditional use permits.
So because the original reservoir had to be replaced, and it was replaced with water tanks, it was based on the permitting process of the state and not the county?
That's correct.
And if there was an issue of stability of the site, I think it was referenced sinking or collapsing of the site, and even maybe a collapsing of one of the tanks, that would not be anything the county could move to rectify, it would have to be a state responsibility to deal with that issue?
So we spoke with Public Works, and they are exempt from getting a grading permit for, because the reservoir did not exceed an acre, so they would do their own monitoring of that activity, and the state would be the authority to investigate any problems with that, and the initial construction of the tanks would go through the state as well.
Can I just jump in? Do you have these pictures of what's obviously an old landfill? Do you have these pictures now?
Yes, we do, and we're well aware of the situation, and there are, Charles Gankel's here from Environmental Health, it was referred to Environmental Health and investigated, and if Charles is available to answer any questions about the inspections that took place related to the disposal of trash, that's sort of a legacy dumping site, and he can explain what they discovered on the property.
There's also an allegation that the original drainage that was part of the original CUP has been amended, or was amended, by the applicant outside the CUP, without authority outside the CUP, and the ripple effect that comes from that, obviously, from storm issues. Can you speak to that? Or who would speak to that?
So, the original CUP, if you're able to look at some of the plans, is very schematic in nature. There are no details related to drainage courses and have you. I think the contention is that the grading took place while the property was vacant. We have no complaint or information related to those drainage improvements being made, and it, I know that Mrs. Mall has approached Building and Safety and Public Works and the Surveyor's Office, and no one's been able to establish a violation, though all of her allegations have been investigated very thoroughly.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Chairman Rodriguez, members of the commission, my name is Charles Gankel, I'm with the manager of the Ventura County Environmental Health Division, speaking to the investigation by my staff. We did go to the property. I don't have all the details for you today, I was not present, I was just briefed to come to this meeting just as it started, so I don't have the details for you right now, but we did investigate. My understanding is that this is a pre-regulation site where there may have been all kinds of debris that was dumped there, would likely be inert debris that would be disposed of at the property.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes?
Was this debris to fill the abandoned reservoir, or was this just a site to dump?
I don't know.
Do you have any information regarding the filling of the reservoir?
This was a pre-regulation site, so we did not regulate that, any filling activities that would be done at that property.
Thank you.
But this filling occurred in the 70s? And certainly, there were regulations in the 70s regarding landfills?
Correct, but we, for the fill of this type of debris, my understanding was it may have been inert debris as part of a filling operation.
Do you have these?
I don't have the pictures before me right now.
Can we get the pictures before you so that you can see what we have been presented with? It's clearly...
Let me follow up. Would the remediation of this easement, or, excuse me, this reservoir be under the jurisdiction of the state? Or would anyone from the county be involved in inspecting or doing remediation?
If there's gonna be any remediation, yes, we would be concerned about the debris that would be removed from the site and properly disposed of.
So that wouldn't be, the county would be involved, that wouldn't be preempted by the state, is that correct?
I'm not sure who would preempt that cleanup activity. We would be involved as a local enforcement agency for the county dealing with the solid waste that would be taken from the property and properly disposed of. That would be our role.
Can we take a break?
Anything broader?
I think that the applicant can clarify, as well as the property owner, Mrs. Mall, the trash that's been exposed is actually on the easement, or adjacent to the easement on Mrs. Mall's property, and many, much of it was exposed during the rain, so there's no evidence that the reservoir itself has any debris in it. It's the creek bed, and as the creek eroded during a heavy rainstorm, that trash was exposed. And I spoke with Sean Debley, who investigated the site, and because we were looking through this, and no violation was found per the Environmental Health Division related to this, it's a legacy site, in their opinion, and it's on Mrs. Mall's property, not in the reservoir itself.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no evidence that it's in the reservoir that we're aware.
Okay, thank you. We need to take a break. We're gonna take a break for five minutes. Continue with the planning commission meeting. Yes, questions of staff?
I would like to point out to you, these minutes that were provided to us from last year, from the Miners Oaks Water District, where the board member said that the property was used as a dump site. I think that is evidence that the property was used as a dump site, these minutes that have been, you know, certified. What does, how does the county respond?
I was in direct communication with the inspector for Environmental Health, there is a board member who had mentioned that there was a dump site in that area, it was pre-regulatory time period, and the dumping that was discovered, the trash that was discovered on the site, was actually in the drainage course immediately on Mrs. Mall's property and not on the Miners Oak District's property. It's not uncommon with conversations with Environmental Health to discover these dumping sites in rural areas where farmers and community members that lived in the rural area found it too difficult to get into to dump, and they created these informal dumping areas. And what was investigated and discovered was that the trash was exposed after a rain event adjacent to the driveway leading up to the property and within the easement area that Mrs. Mall was discussing that leads from Highway 33 to the tank site.
I have a follow-up. Do we have any indication that the abandoned reservoir was filled with trash or some substances that could lead to a subsidence on the property?
I believe the applicant is speak to that, but, you know, they spend an awful lot of money to build those tanks, millions of dollars of infrastructure, and they have the geotechnical studies that are necessary to build those sort of facilities, and...
I'm assuming those are all permitted, and they would worry about such things as subsidence, would they not? Would a soils report be required for a 750,000 gallon tank or something?
Yes, it would, and that would be, again, something that would be looked at and regulated by the state, but I believe the applicant can speak to that. We're not here to discuss the tanks necessarily, though obviously, that's the setting, and in conversations with Building and Safety in the past, a tank of that site, yes, definitely needs to be engineered, and there's engineering firms that specialize in these water systems, and a geotechnical soils report would be required.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing, rebuttal by the applicant, and I have a speaker's card as well, from Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you very much. The statement from the county is accurate. As far as rebuttal, we could go back and forth and talk about this until we're all blue in the face and the cows come home. So I don't believe that the county wants to invest that kind of time today into this. However, there are a few things with regard to your last question with engineering and soils. I'll give you an example, that tank was replaced and built in 2015. Extensive soils testing was done for hazardous materials as well as mandated by the state. Overexcavation of the site was done. I don't remember the exact yardage that was overexcavated, but it was 24 feet deep, and probably, it was at least twice the circumference of the tank, so probably 150 feet wide on a bowl-shaped tapered down. Re-engineered fill was put back in. The material that was taken out was mainly old steel pipes that had been placed in there as it was an abandoned reservoir, dirt and some organics. And so, we had, always had the site tested, always had it monitored per state regulation, so as that site was refilled and backfilled with engineered fill and geo-grid, geo-madding to help stabilize the site, because we knew that it was a, where is a bore at one time, an open reservoir. Certain accommodations have to be made to, so the soil can handle a tank that size with that kind of weight. With regard to the trash, I believe the county is also right, that that's not on our property, it's on the side of the easement road that we don't have control of. However, the district did at times, prior to Miss Mall's arrival to the property, we did do cleanup over there, where there was bamboo, there was a lot of overgrown, we call it a rundo, and hobo living inside of one of them, partially in one of the drain pipes. We got rid of them, got rid of the trash. Even though it wasn't our property, we also knew that that was active runoff from the neighboring property in ours. And so, we actually cleaned both sides of the drains on the roads and actually made them act a little bit more efficiently.
Did you alter the drainage?
I'm sorry?
Did you alter the drainage from the original location or flow?
No, we just reattached, we connected a portion across part of the driveway through catch basins, so the water would not sheet flow across the top and debris, but it would literally go under and then go into an existing drain that was already there that emptied into that property. So we just cleaned up and tied into existing. The site isn't sinking. I just want to make that very clear, we don't place and invest a million dollars of our constituents' money on a site that's sinking. So the site is very stable. I just want to make that perfectly clear. The site location of those tanks, the location of those tanks is set specifically by design of the system that was done in the 50s. It is a gravity system, we are not a pumped system, and so, those, it's a strategic placement of those to get the required amount of pressure into our customers, so. Morgan is correct, we do have other properties, but they're not conducive for the purpose of that.
For the purpose of water conveyance?
Of water storage, correct. Because our...
But that's not before us, we're just talking about the storage unit.
Correct. I just wanted to address one of the other complaints, so.
We just, like, compartmentalize, that that's not our purview, so...
Very good.
But you do have other properties to have the storage facility?
Say that again, please? Was that a question, or was that a statement?
That's a question.
Can you repeat it, please?
Do you have other properties where you could locate this storage facility?
Not that can house that facility, no. We have other properties, but they're well sites, they're... We have other properties, but they're, they're well sites, they're, if, one of them is even, it's not an easement, so no.
Gotcha. Can I ask another question? On these minutes, you know, when our, when our meeting began, we adopted minutes and it, and if there are any mistakes, if there are any errors, we, we correct them. So, these are minutes from the Miners Oaks Water District from a year ago that says very clearly that at one time, the property was used as a dump site and was kept as such for a long time, until it was decided to be the spot for the existing tank. Those are minutes
So, you want clarification on that?
Those are minutes, so, you know, clearly, clearly, Mr. Krunch Schmidt stated that it was a dump site. And that's where the existing tank is, where, until it was decided to be the spot for the existing tank.
So, a lot of things have happened in the water district over the last year, and I can't speak to or for Director Krunch Schmidt. He could have been referencing someone else, he could have been mistaking his terms or not understanding. Either way, that's how, what was written and that's how it's recorded. As far as a dump site, like I've said, we remediated, we removed a lot of soil during that tank replacement. And we didn't come up with people's kitchen sinks or water heaters or batteries, none of that appeared. It was just dirt, organic material. So, maybe as a dump site, he could have been referring to as in just a backfill for the dirt material for that site. There's no record that the district holds of backfilling of that area. There was, there was just no records taken at the time. So, we have no idea other than what we over excavated during our last project of what's in that site. And like I said, we went down to the depth of the reservoir.
And, and one last bit, there's a question of whether you're going to have 11,000 square feet of asphalt or 4,900 per the CUP, which is it?
The 4,900 is what the district is looking at initially. There was discussions of right around 10, 11,000 square feet of impervious material asphalt to be put down that we were looking at. We found that to not be practical and moved on to the 4,900. And if, if we were to try to do anything else, that all would have to go through the county as well. So, it's not like we can sneak in an extra 5,000 square feet of asphalt at the site.
What is, so what is the CUP, again, refresh my memory, what does the CUP specifically speak to as far as potential paving?
The proposed CUP incorporates a storage yard and the 1,800 square foot storage building and also the 4,900 square feet of impervious surface.
Okay, it does not include paving beyond the 4,900 it's authorized?
No, it does not include that.
You understand that?
Yes, sir.
You understand it would require additional permitting to go beyond that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a question, are you through? Nor are you done? I have a question. What was the storage, what was the storage facility being used for specifically?
The, the whole property or just the building?
No, the storage, the storage structures in front of us today, what was it used for previous to your application?
I don't believe that it's ever changed, it's always housed
That's what I, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, I don't believe it's ever changed. It's always held vehicles, it's held, or district vehicles, it's held different opportunities of the, of the district that we repair valves, pipe fittings, that sort of thing.
How about fill?
Fill?
Yes, sand, you referenced up to four
No, sir, not
yards of sand.
Not in the building.
Okay. So, your vehicles are stored in the structure?
Not all of them, but one of them is constantly maintained there. The other one, we have other bays, there's three bays. One of them has our, one of our vehicles in, of our service vehicles. The other two bays right now are, are filled up with pipe and valves, fittings for our, capital improvements projects that we have for this year. So, that's, we're using those two bays as assembly areas. Company vehicles are taken home by district personnel when they're on call. So, there's one vehicle
Okay, so the vehicle, the vehicle you have there, in essence, is garaged, it's not out?
One vehicle is, is always garaged, the other one is overnight, it's, it's left outside because those other two bays are, are filled with those projects at this time.
Were that, were both vehicles originally stored inside before you began using the other bays for
No, not typically
other capital project storage?
Not as a matter of practice.
Okay.
We didn't have as many vehicles as when I first started there as we do now.
Okay, I, I've got other things I could ask, but I think I'll hold them until I get it clear in my mind. Thank you.
We do keep two golf carts in there as well for our meter reading.
They're inside storage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Nielsen?
Yes, good morning, gentlemen and ma'am. I'm Lindsey Nielsen, I'm the district's legal counsel. Ms. Moll is recent to the area, she bought her place adjacent to ours two years ago. And for some reason, she has declared war on this district. This is the latest battlefield, I think, today. We have attempted to work with her and we're not quite sure truly what she wants. She thinks that everything the district does is somehow harming her. But we've tried to remind her, we are a water district, we have to supply water, we're a public utility. And we have certain obligations to make sure that our system works. We did not ask that her gate be stopped. The county reached out to the district to ask questions. We were very concerned because in the construction of that gate, her crew dug out and exposed our main water line. We are now hiring geotechnical people to tell us how do we recompact that area? If that blows out, there's going to be a lot of people without water. So, there's been activities that have concerned us. We, we, Ms. Moll has been to every board meeting for the last 14 months. And we've, we've actually met with her and said, what is it? How can we be good neighbors? We still don't have the answer to that question. And it's befuddling to the directors because we don't like this situation any more than anybody else does. But we also have a legal duty to provide water. When she turns on the tap, she wants water to come out of there. That may change if we don't get more rain because Commissioner Anstott asked about the Upper Ventura River, there are studies right now going on in that groundwater agencies. But more important, Lake Casitas is on a downward spiral and it's going to be a very serious problem shortly. But nonetheless, the district is trying to do what's right. I don't think we are spiteful as she believes, but we also have to protect our facilities and serve our customers. And so, we would respectfully ask, she constantly raises things about surveys, we have hired Benner and Carpenter, we're going to be filing, in fact, it's in the county right now, a new record of survey. It's, the topography is such there that the board said, we're not going to put the fence right on the lines, we're going to come back from the lines. So, that there's no question about whose property, our fences or all the things of this nature. But we just want to deliver water and we respectfully request that the commission approve our CUP.
How long have you been legal counsel for Miners Oak Water District?
You know, I was trying to think about that the other day. I think it's about 15 years, 10, 10, 15 years.
Okay, so, not during the time when it was used as a dump site?
I'm old, but I'm not that old, ma'am. No, not at all. But that was the concerns, that's why the district, before we undertook the project of these new water storage facilities, we spent a lot of money on geotechnical and soils engineering because that was a concern. And after spending tens of thousands of dollars, we said, we're fine. We have no evidence of sinking or anything else. And if we'd, it would be irresponsible to put a multimillion dollar facility on something that would not sustain it. So, they do their job very conscientiously, that board.
And when that, that tank was constructed there and that work was done, when was that again?
2015, I believe.
What kind of, never mind, thank you.
Anything else?
No other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I said never mind because that is not before us and because even, it's just not within our purview. So, I just, that's what my little gears turning were. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or information from staff?
Mr. Gankel, I believe, has returned and he was going to go look to see if he could find the file to confirm the, what, the investigation of the trash disposal.
Yeah, come on up and, that's what I'm saying.
I was able to locate the complaint file, thank you for your patience. Staff did investigate and do a site visit on the property. They did go to the site adjacent to the property where the reservoir is located. They did observe some inner concrete debris at that location. They also investigated the, the area where the sinkhole was identified and they also did find some minor concrete debris that was located on that site. And I believe on the complainant's property along the driveway, they did identify the area where we saw the other types of solid waste that was described, needles, metal debris, bottles, plastics, pipe and tin cans. That type of debris was located at that particular site that I believe is on the complainant's property. And to our knowledge, we don't have a, a record of those, that is being operated as a, a dump site, a regulated, regulated dump site. It may have been used as sort of a community dump site or for people who may have been in the area may have dumped debris there at that time. That's all the information we have about that. Anything else?
Okay, thank you. Okay. No other, yes, ma'am, do you have something additional to add? New, new information or are you speaking in regards to what you heard? Okay, come on up. While she's coming up No, just a second. While she's coming, can we get this marked as exhibit for the record? Yes, what's your additional information?
I, I wanted to also, I didn't bring the document, but I can give you the document that states that the reservoir was slated to be filled in 1986. So, by the time when it was drained and when it was slated to be filled. And B. Foley, who actually was here, was the one that has the document. So, I have that. And then also, I just wanted to make you aware of the date for the 11,000, for the asphalt. This was after they applied for their CUP. So, it was in, anyway, that's all.
Okay, well, on that issue, I think we've made it real clear to the applicant what the parameters of any asphalt coverage is going to be under this permit. And he's acknowledged that anything beyond that would require reapplication for an amendment. Okay, thank you. No other comments, questions, we're going to close the public hearing? Comments, commissioners? Motion?
I am convinced that it was a dump site because the minutes that they had ample time to correct if it was incorrect, state that it was a dump site. I think that the trash that is exposed on this adjacent property wasn't a separate dump site, it's all part of the same. It seems to me that, it kind of reminds me of this story I had where I had two bunnies and one got loose and got into the neighbor's garden. And they angrily knocked on my door and said, do you have a black bunny? And I can be very literal minded sometimes, and I said, no, because my bunny was dark brown. It's the same bunny and this is the same trash. I don't, it's not, it's not clear to me when it was cleaned up on the property site. The question about where the limits of our purview are have to do with the tanks and we can't, we can't, we can't go there. But this is definitely a problem and I am unwilling to pretend that, that this site is unremediated and that we do have the ability to, to see that it's done properly. That's my two cents.
Commissioner Anstott?
To support the fact that there is something that requires remediation on the applicant's property, I understand and appreciate what you're saying. And it's not uncommon in rural areas, like in our own ranches for that effect, communal dumps took place during the 30s, 40s and 50s. And they're out there today, but I don't, as it relates to this particular CUP, my concern was with subsidence and other issues. And the evidence before us clearly indicates that the site was remediated for the 750,000 square foot tank, or gallon tank, to a depth far beyond anything I would have ever thought. And I understand there are issues, that some of which we can't get into because of the state's involved, and there are other adjacent property owner issues which are not properly before us. So, I'm prepared to move the staff recommendation, knowing that there are issues between the two property owners, which I don't believe we have any responsibility for.
Is that a motion?
No, it's, I was waiting to hear what you had to say. You want me to make it a motion, I will.
Well, the only thing I'm going to say is, obviously, there's issues between the two properties, complicated by the fact that we've got local jurisdiction and we've got the state regulations as it relates to, to the, I guess, the excavation and installation of these tanks, once the reservoir was, original reservoir was deactivated. And our scope here is very narrow. And certainly, county council could, if, could tell us if, if that's, if I'm correct on that, we're limited to what, what is here in front of us, not, not the tanks.
That's correct, the tanks, we have no permitting authority over those. And even with regards to the trash, I would just point out that it sounds like it's a pre-existing condition with the site. And so, the CUP application today, if, if the trash is a concern, then you'd have to articulate how that pre-existing condition would preclude your commission from making the findings of approval. And so, even that issue is, is complicated.
Well, is it a health hazard to have unregulated dumping? Well, is it a health hazard to have unregulated dumping, you know, getting exposed? I, I can't imagine what even is in there. Everything. I would imagine all sorts of things are in there. Is it a public health issue?
I, I would say if it is, it's, it's within the jurisdiction of Environmental Health Division. And, and so that's an issue that it sounds like they've already looked into, but if there's still concerns, then that's within their jurisdiction. And, and I would say that's separate and apart from the permitting matter before your commission, because they have continuing jurisdiction over those sorts of issues.
In addition, the only evidence before us is that the material is located or was located on the adjacent property.
Well, I'm, I'm not a fool. It's, it's all the same.
Well, I understand. I, I make a motion, form a motion, we approve staff recommendation. Knowing that there are issues that we can't resolve.
Yeah, and that includes the exhibit from the.
Yes, including the exhibit submitted by the adjacent property.
Have a second? I'll second it.
Now, what happens when this fails? Can, can we move that this be continued until there's more?
A full, a full commission? That is where we're at right now.
I think we've already passed that.
We have passed it, we voted.
Go ahead.
Chairman Rodriguez, members of the Planning Commission, Environmental Health is here to ask that question related to the situation with the legacy dumping area. And they can correct me if they wish, though if, if a legacy trash fill is found on our property, it's found, discovered to be a problem, it's the property owner where that trash is located who actually is responsible for cleaning it up. And there's no evidence or clear direction from, that we know of, that it was Miners Oaks that was bringing the trash there. So if someone were to trespass on your property, leave trash, ultimately it would be, and you couldn't find those people, it would be the property owner's responsibility to clean that up. And again, there was no inert debris discovered that would make it a hazardous situation, according to the inspection staff, Environmental Health. And again, the material that was, was discovered was on Mrs. Mole's property, not Miners Oaks. And so it would be as if someone were to take a dump truck and dump it on your ranch or something and ultimately it would be your responsibility to clean it up. It wouldn't be Miners Oaks' responsibility to clean up someone else's property if there was a legacy dump discovered on that, on that adjacent land. And Environmental Health is here to, to, to ask that because they are the lead enforcement agency in that area.
Yeah. We voted. With a two, one vote approves the CUP.
No, no, it does not. That's why I'm saying, let's, let's get more people on here and, and vote to continue it. Have a de novo hearing.
County Council?
Yeah, you know what, I'm not, I mean, I think that your commission's already voted and you didn't approve the CUP, so I don't, there's nothing to continue. We don't have jurisdiction anymore.
Can.
And so there would have to be a.
Reapplication.
A motion for reconsideration made by, I think.
Those two?
No, because they, it would have to be someone who.
Voted no?
Who voted against it, yes, it would have to be from you.
Can, okay, so if we did a vote for reconsideration and then we all did what? What would it have to do next in order to have the matter continued? I'm not, I'm just not comfortable voting to.
What new information, Nora, what new information would you want?
I'm, I'm, I am satisfied that it's their landfill. And because of the limits of our purview, we are not able to ascertain regarding the, the land under the tanks and how that was done is satisfactorily remediated. But we do have jurisdiction over this storage facility. We have what I believed was believable and compelling evidence that, that there's an ongoing problem with subsidence and with migration of the dumped trash, creating a, you know, a health hazard that needs to be cleaned up.
So we have evidentiary support that there was no subsidence. We have the history of the permitting of the seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank. We have no evidence that the material discovered came from or was on the applicant's property.
I think you have to be willfully blind to believe that. Now, my independent judgment is that that was used as a dump site. It says so in their minutes. And we have a credible witness saying that she has all kinds of evidence, one that, that there was, the area is sinking.
I understand what you're saying.
I, I find that to be credible and believable.
We have Environmental Health, who's inspected the property, giving their report, not implicating anything on the applicant's property at all. I think the, there is no evidentiary support for what you're talking about. If there is some new information, it would shed some light, but there's no evidentiary support for what you're saying. I understand the suspicion. I understand the conflict between the property owners and potential for nuisance and other actions and what have you, encroachment, et cetera, but that's not in front of us.
I have new information.
This is the.
Close, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Public hearing is closed.
Um, I, I understand you have a different point of view and I have mine. And the remedy for this is to have a vote for reconsideration, according to county council, and then we can continue it after, afterwards and get a de novo hearing and the other two commissioners. And then you could get your vote.
Or the applicant can appeal to the board.
Or the applicant can appeal to the board, but wouldn't that, wouldn't that cost some, wouldn't that cost them something?
Well, they don't have a permit, which is the whole purpose of this hearing.
What's the, what's the cleanest way to do it, Mr. Barnes?
Well, if it pleases your commission, you could vote for reconsideration and Commissioner Dukas, you would have to make the motion to continue it to a time certain, the next commission meeting is March first. And so then the other two commissioners would need to get up to speed. They would review the hearing and so you wouldn't have to do a complete do-over. And so then it could be brought back to the full commission for reconsideration. Or the alternative is if you don't want to do that, then, like you said, the applicant would appeal presumably and then it would go to the Board of Supervisors for de novo hearing.
And, and, but that would cost him another fee? That would, for him, for, I'm sorry, him, the district, I apologize. That would cost the district money to appeal, correct?
Correct, I believe you're right.
But if we had a continuance, there would be, there wouldn't be that burden on the district?
Correct.
I think that's better. I remain unconvinced. I know that you are convinced of your point of view, but I'm convinced of mine. So I would like to ask for a vote of reconsideration of the last action we took.
That a motion?
Yes, I move, I move for reconsideration. I'm sorry if I did it wrong.
No second. I will, I will offer a second, but only for the purpose, primarily for the purpose of, of the applicant having to file a formal appeal, which is, we'll be open to him regardless if he doesn't get, if we have a rehearing and the permit's denied. That application is still, that avenue is still available to the applicant, obviously with the cost involved.
So this motion to reconsider, if I vote yes, that's just to reconsider the previous vote?
Right, you would, you would, it would come back and you would have to reopen the hearing.
Okay. So here.
And so it would be a two-step process. It would be to, if you want to do the reconsideration, that's one vote, then you would have to vote to continue it to the next, I would suggest continuing it to the next Planning Commission meeting on the, on March first.
I don't think you're right. We've got a decision. If she moves to reconsider, I understand that, but beyond that, I didn't understand what you were saying.
Well, the reconsideration of the permit application would, would have to be rescheduled for a subsequent meeting.
What do we have coming up on the calendar?
It's a RVOs, right?
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yeah.
On March first, we have a county initiative ordinance to amend the non-coastal and coastal zoning ordinance to regulate temporary rental units. So that'll be presented to you.
That'll have a lot of participants, that's, we're talking about short-term rental units, that'll be hot, take it on.
Yeah, and you know what, now, now I see where Commissioner Ronsdorf's being nice to me, but it's procedurally, I see his point and, you know, this doesn't happen every day, but we wouldn't be continuing everything and anything because, you know, your commission already, already voted on it, so that's, I understand where he's coming from.
Oh, I don't understand.
Well, because if you're, if you're voting to reconsider, then it's, it's, it's basically a redo and we're not continuing anything. It's, it's basically another de novo hearing. And so just thinking it through.
Okay.
I, I think we would need to, and I, I'm sorry, I'll take that back, I know we would need to renotice it and we can't just reschedule it right now. And what I'm also not sure about, again, because this doesn't happen every day, is if, if you can make your motion to reconsider now or if that needs to wait until the next, the next meeting. Our rules don't address that specifically. I believe the Board of Supervisors rules do. I have, don't have those in front of me.
But the motion was made, died for lack of a second.
It, it did, and so there's nothing to continue. And so the only question in my mind is how reconsideration works.
Excuse me, Commissioner Ronsdorf? Chair Rodriguez did second it. The motion to reconsider.
Well, I'm not sure what he did, quite frankly.
If we could, if we could take a five-minute recess, I could check in, check on the reconsideration rule so we get that right. And again, the question in my mind is, I'm not sure if you can move at, at this hearing to reconsider or if that has to wait until a subsequent meeting. I, I'm almost positive you could do it now.
Five minutes.
But I just want to be sure.
But we are mid-vote and he did, and he did second it.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, give county council an opportunity to research this.
Mr. Barnes, you have some answers for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair Rodriguez. We were on the right track before, I just wanted to, with Commissioner Ronsdorf's help. And so here's how it works. Commissioner Dukas can make, and she already did make, the motion to reconsider. That requires a unanimous vote because there's only three of you here. If that is approved, then the public hearing will need to be renoticed because, again, your board already voted, so there's nothing to continue. And so that will be renoticed as though the hearing never occurred today. So the first step, I guess the only step is to, to move, to continue the motion for reconsideration and if that passes, then it'll go back to staff to renotice and schedule the reconsideration hearing.
So we do have on our screen that there was a motion and the chair seconded and I have voted, but I don't know if we have three votes.
Comment?
Do you have a question? No, you're just thinking.
I guess, before we have a speaker, I guess my question is, you know, if we need, we need a majority, obviously all three of us, to, to continue. Is that what, that is what you said?
For reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
You need all three.
You need all three of them.
You need all three and it looks like the applicant would, would like to chime in. This is, I would say let, let both sides address this because now this is a new issue and it's, we're outside the, the hearing on the permit itself.
Okay, we'll reopen the public hearing on this limited issue.
So can we, can we table, can, do we table this then? Because my screen is up with.
Yeah, so is mine.
This motion.
I would suggest that, I would suggest getting input by the, by the parties.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Lindsey Nielsen, once again, the district would just as soon appeal the decision, the failure to approve this, rather than reconsider and move this down.
You haven't lost yet, Mr. Nielsen.
We just as soon.
I understand the cost involved is the same.
Well, it, 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 it's a, it's a trial de novo and, and I think that it would also be the same thing at the Board of Supervisors. So essentially, we don't want to have to do that twice because we're anxious to get on with things. So that's our input, you can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's valuable information, thank you. So.
Withdraw your motion.
So we'll just.
We can't, we voted.
Or do you, would you like to withdraw your motion because you can?
Now you're confusing me. We voted. There is or is not a pending motion for reconsideration.
There is, a pending motion for reconsider.
Okay, feel free. I'm just not sure, I mean, if you, I was, I was assuming once you make a motion, before it's, before it's voted on, the, the movement can withdraw it, but if, if you don't think that's the case, then I'm 100% sure.
Given, given the applicant's comments, in order to move it forward to the board.
You would just vote no on the pending motion?
Okay.
Yeah, so why don't you just, if that's your pleasure, just go ahead and do that.
Sorry for the confusion, but this hardly, I think it's happened one other time in the fifteen years that I've been on this, so I apologize. Wait, talk where everybody can hear you. You guys.
Well, I was trying to.
I, I'm having a serious problem understanding the procedural posture of this hearing. Serious problem. Now, we voted.
You voted, the application is, is basically deemed denied because it wasn't approved and so now what's before you is just a motion to reconsider.
Wait a second.
Okay.
I thought we moved staff, I moved staff recommendation, there was a second and there was a vote. No? Did that not happen?
That, that did happen.
Okay, then what happened next?
The, the vote failed because you need three affirmative votes to approve a permit.
Okay.
And so the permit application was denied.
Okay.
Deemed denied.
Okay.
And so then what happened next was a subsequent motion for reconsideration of the item made by Commissioner Dukas, who was essentially on the prevailing side because the permit was not approved. And so she was a proper person to make that motion. And so then, now that motion's pending, but the applicant has said they don't want, they don't want it to be reconsidered, they'd rather just go straight to the board.
Right.
To avoid maybe having to go to the board anyways.
Okay.
And so the motion is, is waiting for you to vote on. And so if you vote no on reconsideration, then that means the decision not to. And so if you vote no on reconsideration, then that means the decision not to approve the permit stands.
Right.
And so the next stop is the Board of Supervisors.
So Nora can just withdraw her motion for reconsideration?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Or we can, or we can just vote it no.
Exactly.
Which...
I'm not voting, I've already voted the way I'm going to vote. As far as I'm concerned, what's pending is a motion for reconsideration, which you will either withdraw or will vote on.
Correct. So, vote no.
So if I vote, if I change my vote?
You just change, no, we're not reconsidering it out of respect for what the district's council has said.
Exactly. And Chair Rodriguez, I think you just seconded the motion. I don't think you've actually voted on it yet.
Oh, okay.
No, it says he voted no.
Yeah, I was, I just seconded the motion, and then I hit here, I withdrew my vote.
Okay.
Here we go.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, so the next, the next stop basically is the board, assuming that the applicant appeals. That's the bottom line.
Done.
Okay, the request for CUP, PL 170095, is denied. And the applicant has the, has the right to appeal to the board. You're, Mr. Lindsey, excuse me, Mr. Nielsen, you're, you know the parameter requirement, time requirements for the appeal, et cetera.
We do, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
That is a great argument for not, for continuing a hearing unless you've got...
Yeah.
The board or...
Okay. Can we go to item number eight?
Continue.
Discussion.
But you guys like...
Report by the planning director on board actions and other matters. Mr. Wright.
Chairman Rodriguez, thank you very much. Just reiterating that on March 1st, there will be the county-initiated ordinance amendment to the coastal and noncoastal zoning ordinance to regulate temporary rental units. So that's what's on the horizon for your next hearing, and nothing else to add.
Comments by the commission? The only thing I would say is, Kim picked a heck of a day to put you in the seat. The meeting is adjourned.